Steve Bishop.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Here.
David Grant.
Here.
Steve Feig is missing. Richard Peterson.
Here.
George Hanson is missing and Jay Duhoff.
Here.
Review and acceptance of minutes from the April sixth, two thousand twenty-one meeting.
Motion to be accepted as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Chair report? There is none.
Sorry.
Sorry.
You'll say?
Please don't hang me.
Okay. Code enforcement officers report.
A couple of things. There's another one of those planning board trainings coming up. And because of COVID, they're not doing it in person. So they're going to do a Zoom style. So if anybody's interested in that, I can sign you guys up. And you can take your planning board training through the municipal association via Zoom.
Is it going to be at a scheduled time or is it going to be?
It is at a scheduled time and I could tell you what that time was if I had internet.
Gotcha. Good.
Hopefully it's going to start going again here in a minute.
Okay.
Whole Oceans. Whole Oceans is on hold while they wait for a decision from the legislature on a bill that they submitted, I believe it's LD fourteen seventy-three. It's an emergency bill where they are asking for the structure to be considered agricultural and for livestock to include the term fish so that they will be exempt from MUBA. I disagree with that approach, as does the state by martial. I don't know. We'll just have to wait and see what happens, I guess.
What does that get them?
Well, they
Put the fall of code.
They don't want to they don't want to put air handling systems in because they've got a very huge number that I don't know if I'm allowed to talk about. And they didn't like it, so.
For air handling systems?
Right.
Smell quality, I would think.
Well, that's one of my concerns.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, you've got a metal building with a small lake inside. I would think there's going to be humidity, corrosion, all sorts of different issues like that. But also, yes, smell, ventilation. You know, that is definitely a concern and however this turns out, it's going to affect this town for decades. So, yeah, I feel responsible for making sure that it gets done right. But the other thing that seems weird to me is that they didn't ask for an exemption from the energy code. They asked for an exemption from all of MUBA. And if we're not designing to MUBA, then what standard are we designing to? And that's not a joke or, I mean, that's, that's a serious question. If we're going to review plans, what are we going to review them against if there's no standard?
Let's say it's approved. Would they have to come back before the planning board since plans were changed?
I haven't got that far ahead yet. I know that one of the things we talked about when it was at planning board was voters and, and all that. And at the time, they told us everything was going to be filtered and there would be no issues. And this changes that completely. So, yeah. We've issued a land use permit and nothing but a land use permit. So at this point, they don't have any building permits. They could start digging a hole in the ground and they can do that kind of stuff, but they can't build anything until I issue a building permit. And if I feel like it needs to come back to you guys again, then I have that authority to do that. I'm not saying I'm gonna. I'm not, I don't, you know, that's something that we have to wait and see what happens and I'll discuss it with Sue and, and we'll see where we want to go. But, you know, I'm not a hundred percent against their, I understand their plight. And I want to work with them and help them if we can, but it has to be common sense. It can't just be throw everything out the window because you don't like something. You know, and that's kind of way this feels to me. But, um, anyway.
That's disappointing.
That's the update on that.
Who, do they have a stable CEO situation now? I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of shifts in their company for quite a while.
Know nothing about how their operations are being handled, other than the point of contact, the project manager is Mike Thompson. He's the fellow that's next door.
Am I, am I wrong? Am I misspeaking? But is it?
I know there was a change. I don't know if it's, I don't think I'd use the word unstable. I think it's just a change.
Okay.
You know, they've had a lot of staffing changes.
Okay.
But they do have Mike Thompson onboard running the show for them as far as this project. And I can't remember her name, but they've got a fantastic scientist biologist. I'm not sure if she's watching this, please. I apologize. I don't remember what your title is, but she's crazy smart about this stuff and she's onboard and she's, she's, her and Mike Thompson are the only two I'm aware of that are actively working on this. I'm sure there's people behind the scenes I don't know about, but.
But there's much money and time that's involved with it. I can't imagine that it's, that it's just that simple for them to move with that. There's got to be a greater plan in place on their part and I'd love to hear it, so.
We all would. They're very tight-lipped.
Yeah.
I think that is my update for that. I've got a few things to talk about about these, when we get going on this other stuff.
Okay. Limited public forum, an opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to land use or planning in the town of Bucksport. Not sure if we have any questions or that have been sent in regarding anything not on the agenda for me.
No.
Okay.
Unless something's come in in the last minute or two. No.
Okay. So I will close the limited public forum and we'll move to unfinished business. First is a public hearing, propose Panopscott Narrows Solar Contract Zone Agreement to allow a twenty acre, five megawatt solar project in the Route fifteen RC on lots identified on the town tax map, one lot three and five, and map thirty-six, lot five. The applicant is Ameresco.
I did tell people that they could come in tonight if they wanted to speak. And they also can call or email and I haven't received anything as far as the public hearing. I did, I don't know if this is the right time to talk about, about, I did get one call from Inabutter. It was the one we've been waiting to hear from that directly abuts the, the project. It has the in-ground pool in his backyard and, and he had some thoughts and yeah, I don't know what's going on Dylan, but I still don't have internet. He, uh, obviously doesn't like it, but he's resigned to it, but he'd like them to do a few things for him. And one of them is there's a, a giant wall of rhododendrons. I have photos. If I could get online, I could show them to you. And he'd like those saved. He was hoping to talk to Rob Jackson today. I don't know if it's just me or if it's.
Well, I haven't had it on the phone today, so.
Absolutely. It always works and we're working on it today. Anyway, he, uh, he'd like to have those, that wall of flowers saved if he could. I don't know that they're on his land. They may very well not be on his land, but they are right up against his map. And he was supposed to talk to Rob today. I don't know if he got ahold of him, so Rob may talk about that in a minute. Are you connected to the wifi?
I'm running it through my phone.
Okay.
Rob, can you hear it all?
Yeah.
Were you able to get contact with Mr. McCoy about the, the rhododendrons, the butter?
Yeah, he sent me an email this evening. I responded and let him know that we would incorporate rhododendrons into the screening plan and we preserve those rhododendrons on the, I guess he mentioned the east side of his property.
Can you?
So that's what we started with.
Can you bring that up here by the microphone so that the public can hear him?
Yeah.
That's okay?
Yeah, no problem. Rob, can you say that again, please?
Sure, yeah. Ed emailed me earlier this evening. I responded to him and, you know, consistent with our April seventh discussion regarding the NERPA filing that we did with Maine DEP, we committed to preserving rhododendrons on the east side of his property and incorporate that into the screening plan that, that we're going to do.
Yeah, so I guess to add a little more context is what's being shown right now is, is actually on the, the subject parcel. So he had been maintaining it and he acknowledged that he knew it was the abutting landowners, but they had been there forever. He liked them. He'd just been maintaining them. So he was understanding about all that. And then, you know, as the agreement, there was a handshake agreement there to incorporate those into the, the screening and replant or augment as needed.
But nothing in writing?
Not that, you know, they're working through it right now.
It happened, Dave.
How much of a distance are we talking about here on property law?
Is that the line right there, that raised grass area or, do you know?
I would say it's pretty close.
Yeah, it's probably approximate. I don't know what that is, yeah.
Okay, so it's fifteen feet or so, twenty feet.
So you think this is the property line here?
I think so. Again, it's hard to tell with, with the photo, but there was, you know, when we had the alter done, there was evidence of, of the property corners that Plisgande was able to pick up to locate that.
Gotcha. Yeah, I, I think part of the reason it took so long for him to get in touch with us was because he's down in Florida and it took a while for his mail to finally get to him. And because this is the third abutting notice we've sent out and, and I just heard from him yesterday. And he doesn't do text messaging. So we, we did emailing and that wasn't working for some reason. And finally, we got that working today. So that's why the late notice and he just got a chance to call Rob today.
Yeah, he was on our Zoom call when we did our DEP.
Yep, he mentioned that he'd talked to you guys about that on Zoom, but he said he wanted to talk to you on the phone, something about.
Yeah, it was tough with connection.
He didn't feel Zoom was working well, I don't know. So, anyway.
And he was one of two abutters that attended that call. So, you have the butter, I forget her name. She's the blue house that's directly across from the driveway.
Okay.
Her questions were mainly about view, you know, and then there is existing vegetation screening with trees that are not being impacted directly across from her house. So from a, a visual standpoint, her property is in a good position as well.
So will these be outside the fence line?
Not as they currently stand, no.
Okay. So, so those rhododendrons would be inside the fence?
Yeah, now based on what we're hearing, we're going to have to reassess how to work those into what's, what's being planned, so.
Because I did read in one of the plan, I, I don't remember which one. Basically, the Ameresco commits to maintaining landscaping inside the fence, but outside the fence will be by others.
I think that was about, that was referring to mowing, wasn't it? I think that's what that was.
Just the mowing? I thought the, the mowing, I thought was a chapter of the, the next heading. I'm just curious if, if this fellow, this Mr. McCoy has been maintaining these, if they're inside the fence.
Oh, I think he wanted the fence behind them. Is that? Rob shaking his head, yes.
Correct. Correct, yeah.
So the rhododendrons would be on his side of the fence. He can continue to maintain them. I also don't know, because I know on your plan, it showed fir trees. They were going to be five foot, six inches tall to start. And they, there's a whole bunch of information in there about how they'd be maintained over the first two to five years. I don't know how this affects that. Are they, they still going to go in and go behind these or do they not happen now? Or did you discuss that with this gentleman? I can't remember his name. Edwin, I think it is?
McCoy.
Yep. Did you discuss that with Mr. McCoy, Rob?
I, I didn't. Ed just sent me an email just to clarify. He just, I think he wanted it in writing. So I, I think we, you know, we committed to writing, in writing, that we would, you know, preserve those rhododendrons. Tom can talk about the specifics of the screening plan, but, you know, those, you know, you know, I can read the exact email if you guys wanted to, well. But basically, he said, "On the April seventh Zoom meeting, I spoke with Robert Jackson about the fence surrounding my property. I told him I would like to save the rhododendrons on the east side of the lawn. He asked how high they are and maybe a fence could be installed on the east side of the rhododendrons. This would certainly make this project more palatable to me. Thanks for all your help." So, you know, I, I mean, I, I think what we'd probably do is so that Ed can get to the rhododendrons as we just kind of cite the fence line inside of those rhododendrons so he, you know, wouldn't be inhibited by, you know, maintaining those. And certainly we'll, you know, maintain vegetation. We're leasing the entire parcel at this point, so, you know, we, we have to maintain the vegetation. Make sure that we maximize, you know, the production of the array as well. So we'll do it to that extent. And, you know, also to maintain the stormwater features on the site, obviously. And, you know, anything related to environmental part. But, you know, Tom, I don't know if you want to explain a little bit more about the screening part of it.
Sure, so we do have, we have a landscape architect on staff who, you know, when we go to final design, what they really look is like what the actual layout's going to look like, what's available for species at that time, then they do a full detailed plan. But with a situation like this, they would work those, those evergreen plantings kind of harmoniously in with that. And likely they'd end it where those start and then kind of on the other end where landscaping picks back up, that's where they'd go for the important things.
Okay.
And we likely sense it would be a, a feature of the, you know, screening that we would be permitting. There would be some maintenance there. So if nobody say they, they haven't died or you had some issues, they'd have to be maintained as well, so.
Okay.
All right, so we're, we're still in the, the public hearing. There's no, no contact from anyone?
No.
Okay, I guess I'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to the continued review.
So the continued review is on the contract zone?
Yes.
The contract zone, I gave you all an updated copy. And I gave you folks an updated copy. The, not much change from the copy that's on the, it was just a couple of little typos that the lawyer picked up on. And when I wrote the sunset clause, I worded it wrong, to be blunt. So I fixed that, but basically it said that after two years, the contract zone was null and void, and that's not what we want. What it was supposed to say was after two years, if the project hasn't been substantially started, then the contract zone is null and void. So I fixed that language.
Who's going to determine substantially? Who's going to determine?
I mean, it's, you know, if they're making progress and stuff, but, you know, if all they've done is cut a couple of trees and then they
Right.
Stop. I don't think that's going to happen, but it's just one of those things you put in there to protect. And certainly this is, you know, you guys can, if you have any comments or, or whatnot on this, it's, it's a draft copy. And even if you guys approve it tonight.
The town council still has to.
The town council still has to approve it. It would probably still go back to the lawyer again for a final review. And I would assume Ameresco would also want to have their legal team look at it and make sure they were happy with their side of it. Have you had a chance to review it, Rob? Did you have any concerns?
Mark, I don't believe we got a copy of that yet.
Not the updated one, because I just did it about an hour ago. I can email it to you if you'd like to have a copy.
That would be great, yeah. We'd, we'd be happy to review that document, yep.
But the one that I sent before, did you see that one?
I have to look back at my emails, but I, I don't believe we received it. Mark, did you forward that to us? Mark Christopher, is he there?
Yeah, if I got it, I would have sent it to the, to everybody on the project team.
Okay.
If Luke hadn't sent it to everybody already.
I, I, I'll check my emails.
It's okay. I'm going to send you the updated one in just a second anyway, so.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay, you should get it.
Yeah, Luke, I, I got it. If it's the same one, I'll, I'll get that reviewed right away.
Yeah, it's the, it's the same thing except for that language I just mentioned. The, the sunset clause.
Okay. I think the only, the one thing that, now, there might be potentially a couple of extensions to the lease.
Yeah.
You know, there's, I believe there are two, five-year options.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it would, you know, be the twenty years plus those extensions, I guess, that we would probably ask for.
Do I have twenty years in here somewhere? Oh.
I'm not sure what the.
I think I put for the life of the project, but let me.
The life of the project, okay.
Because who knows? It could end up being forty years if they're working good and there isn't new technology. I'm not seeing a timeline.
Yeah, you're timing it.
No, I'm in the new.
So without one.
So we should put one in, man. We should put in for the life of the project or something along those lines, if it's not in there somewhere that I'm missing.
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right, I'm just going to write that on here and just say for the life of the project.
You said your lease was for twenty years?
That's correct. Yep. With a couple of five-year options. Options to extend.
Just the thought going down the road, if they have the twenty year, we should be at the twenty with a review at the end of twenty, perhaps. Who knows what kind of technology is going to come along and what they may want to do or what happens if the lease is given up? I mean, I'm just looking twenty years down the road. Don't know. Just thought I'd mention it.
Well, we wouldn't make them rip it out after twenty years.
Oh, sure.
They'd still buy it.
Yeah. With new technology, they'd probably rip it out themselves and put something new in there.
That much better than they probably would, but. But then, and then obviously if they're changing it, then they'd have to come back by the fall.
Changing it up? It's solar.
Yeah, they wouldn't, if I could change out the panels or replace panels, I wouldn't think that would affect that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking and.
That's kind of like a normal maintenance or.
Right, and the new panels are coming along. I'm sure there's going to be more powerful panels. You're at five, I think, megawatts now or something. Right? And then, God knows, you could be at ten within ten years, depending on how things go. So, just thoughts that I was having.
Is that something that we would want to review at all?
I don't know. I don't know. I'm just saying, new technology comes along and we want to make sure that we understand.
I guess what I'm saying is if it's not changing the environment and it's not, you know, if it's just a new panel on the existing stand.
I, I don't see how it affects us at that point, except maybe a better tax base. You know, we all want to make more money and help the town.
Unless they would have to change the mounting bases, I believe it would have any effect at all, would it?
No.
Technology, you take this piece off, you put this piece on and that's all you do. You know, what have you bought with it? Nothing. I don't see that as really being a real big issue. People update the technology all the time. Unless he changes the landscape of, of how they're installed, I don't, I don't think there's any issue.
I think we might request, I guess, just since, you know, this language is in the lease that, you know, I mean, we, these are all valid points. Obviously, I just, I'd suggest keeping things consistent with the, the lease agreement that we have with the landlord. Just a thought.
I think that would be, that's a decision for the, for the lawyer to agree to, I would think, right? Wouldn't the lawyer want the, the two agreements to be worded? I, I.
Tenually.
I would think, and we're not here to make a legal.
No, we're not.
Decision.
You're right, Brian.
So rather than put for the life of the project, you're saying put for the twenty years plus the two extensions?
Well, the agreements for, the agreement is for this company, right? The contract.
And it says a year, it doesn't transfer without approval.
So if, if they're, if you, if you put, if they, they pick up their option at the end of twenty years and then they pick it up again. Right, so if they're, if you, if you put, if they, they pick up their option at the end of twenty years and then they pick it up again, unless they sell to a, sell out to another company or something, I don't know if that would survive. There is something in here, but I don't know if it says it does or doesn't, I've read so many things that-
Can't transfer to another company without any approval.
So, I think, I think the protection's already in there, it's for this project, for this company, on this land. And if any of that changes, then this is, this is void.
But if it paralleled what their lease agreement is, if our version paralleled what their lease agreement is, then that would help duplicate everything that is on it. It just, it just keeps buying time, buys time for them, buys time for us, not having to do anything, makes it easy for everybody.
Yeah, and I think that there's no, you know, if one is worded one way and the other's worded another way, now you've got some, you know, a gray area that-
I will run that by the lawyer and see how he wants to put it, but... So, if we matched the lease agreement, it would say for twenty years plus two, two, five-year extensions.
Does that make sense? Does that sound good to you guys?
Seems reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, and life of the project is fine too, or, you know, whatever you guys, you know, but either way, that would work for us, yep.
All right, I'll put that written down, run it by the lawyer. Any other thoughts about it, things you'd like to see in it or not in it, or? No?
So... Do we accept this and then move on?
We're all contingent upon the town council for it, correct? They've got to approve this.
They will, but they're gonna weigh heavily on your recommendation.
And we've done, uh, they've actually changed, we did one for the cause development, and then they made, they revised it. So, right, we recommend and they approve.
And that's for the contract zoning, which means they still have to come back to us afterwards?
For-
For the plan, any of this, at all?
Well, that's the next thing on the agenda, if we approve this.
So, but if we, if we agree to send this to the town council, what if they throw it out, but we've already approved the project?
The project approval is contingent on this.
Right.
So if the council was to throw it out, I don't know why they would, but if they did, then that would null and void the project. I think that's fairly standard.
So do we have, do we take a vote on forwarding this to the town council as recommended, or, 'cause we don't really approve it, we just-
Right, you have to take a vote.
Well, it still has to go back to the attorney, if I'm not mistaken.
This change, I will put that in and have him review it, and then it'll go to the council, so you can approve it with this change.
We could, we could recommend it as revised.
Here we go.
I would totally have that motion.
I second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I'm not sure that I can be in on this decision, because I have, I haven't been part of the beginning of it. I have to come up to speed.
Okay.
Because there's four, though. That's enough to-
Yep, so you can abstain, man.
Okay, so we move on now to new business, which is the application review for this Penops Got Narrows solar project. So, and is that a, do we have the paperwork to do that, what is it, a level two review, or?
I do, it's in my office. I did a content review. And, uh, there were only two things that I found missing. And one was the name and address of the, uh, record owner of the property being developed, and, um... Now, I guess that was the third one, but that was inconsequential. The applicant's evidence of right entitled, and they provided that today. And I wasn't a hundred percent certain that it was good enough, so I sent that to the lawyer and he said it was fine. And now I can't find it. But it basically says they've got the lease agreement in place and, and, so that was one, and the other one was, the drawings don't have the surveyor's stamp on them, but they do say that they were done by Pliscon Day and recorded by, recorded by Pliscon Day, so I think that's acceptable. If you guys are okay with it. Everything else that's required was included in the application.
Will they need to be stamped, so will those drawings have to be recorded?
No, because they're, the surveys already are recorded, so these drawings just are the site plan on top of it, they don't require site plans to be recorded. They could, but it's not necessary.
I was wondering if further down the line that, that stamp would be needed.
The surveyor's stamp?
Mm-hmm.
What they did was they took a stamped survey and they put it on their site plan and they overlaid it. So, there is a stamped survey, it's just not stamped on the site plan.
Okay.
It's up to you guys if you want, I'm sure we can get them to submit that.
Is there a reason why the new surveyor did not additionally put his or her stamp on it and addition to the other?
I think that Pliscon Day did the survey for Buckford Mill LLC.
Okay.
Buckford Mill LLC provided that survey to you folks, is that correct?
No, they did, they did, they did an ALTA survey on behalf of Amaresco and the project.
Oh, they did.
So they provide us a stamped PDF ALTA survey and then a digital file that we then use to base our design on. So, them stamping the ALTA survey is a standalone document, and then our use of the digital files, which has my stamp on it, is kinda separate from that, so. So we just have a note that references what the survey was, the survey plan, the basis for our design, and then we can provide that on a separate cover, that's no problem at all, so.
You can't read that. I'll grab that, maybe you can read down through it, but-
Yeah, even if we just had one copy, yeah.
Speed.
About what? Yeah, well-
That'll be great.
Let's hop the press.
All right, so... Has everyone had a chance to review the two files that were sent? The stormwater management plan and, uh-
The one that was seventy-eight pages long?
Yeah. Well, it's a little tough there.
I reviewed it.
I did not, I did not print it, I reviewed it.
I had not printed, no, I didn't.
I printed them, actually, so.
I did print them as well.
I did not print the seventy-eight pages.
Um, so what I'll do is I'll read down through the level two review, and if anybody has any issues, we'll stop and we'll talk about it, all right? Uh, so the applicant is Amaresco. And the proposed land use is this five, or up to five megawatt solar array. Is that accurate? Do you have an introductory presentation?
That's what I, what I did.
That's what you did, okay.
Yeah.
Do you have another, any type of other additional presentation?
Yeah, so since the last time we were here, we submitted for our main DP Natural Resources Protection Act permits and our Army Corps permit, as well as our main DP stormwater permit, so those permits are under review. We've had some preliminary-
We had a couple of questions back from the DEP, but it's not gonna affect our site plan, so. That's flipping along, and, uh, you know, the stormwater, when did you submit that?
Last week, yeah.
Last week, so that's gonna have a seven days or so for review.
And we've consulted with the main DOT and have submitted our driveway entrance permit with main DOT as well, we haven't heard back, but those usually take a couple of weeks, especially as busy they are this time of year, so.
I don't know if this, in this instance, it's necessary, but did you mention or forward any of this information to any of the town departments, like fire, police?
Uh, fire and police, yes, I didn't bother with wastewater. Our superintendent, this doesn't have any effect on them, so.
No, no issue from fire or police?
Okay. Any questions from any members of the board before we delve into the application? Any general questions?
Well, I did have a couple.
Go ahead.
Okay, 'cause just didn't understand totally. The mats you're gonna put down the drive on, what are, what are those like? I mean, I'm just trying to get a picture in my head on-
Yeah, so there's a couple, oh yeah, Mark, you can go down.
Yeah, for, for construction in wetlands, we put down construction mats, and they're basically sixteen foot long by four foot wide. Mats made of wood, usually they're about an inch thick, and they're probably four or five pieces of wood all pulled together into a, into a mat. Those get laid down, uh, so the equipment can drive on it, and reduces rutting, so it prevents erosion, it prevents additional impacts to the wetlands, and if the project had streams, if we had to cross a stream, we'd put those mats down to drive over the stream without getting in the water, so that's-
Those are the power lines, right?
They, that's exactly, yeah.
Same pallets, like if they put on the power line, will they-
Yeah, except they're, they're thick and heavy, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Now, have they taken out afterwards, or are they-
Yeah, oh yeah, they're temporary.
Kinda thought.
Yeah.
Thought I'd ask that question. And then I, I was looking at the Bitterford soil and Buxton type soil samples.
I saw that too, yeah, what was that about?
I'm glad I've asked the question.
It's just the name of the soil, soil formation.
Yeah, I actually looked it up.
You'll see them all over the state, there's Lemoine, there's Heartland, there's-
Yeah, exactly. But what's it really mean?
It's just, yeah, I'm not a soil scientist or a geologist, but it has to do with the glaciated and how, you know, soil deposits were-
Yeah, I'm not specifically sure about those types, but in, in a lot of areas of Maine, we have silty soil.
Right.
You have glacial, glacial till type soil, and that's basically what those, those describe, so you'd have to go back through the Soil Conservation Service and read about the characteristics of that soil. And they rank it, you know, based on its drain, drain, whether it's well-drained or not well-drained, and suitability, and quite a, quite a bit of stuff.
So you don't see any soil issues up there at all?
No, they can build solar projects on a lot of different types of soil. So that's, and they can, you know, they can work with well-draining soils, poorly draining soils. This is not like putting down a foundation for a house or a road, you know, paved road or anything like that.
No, you're gonna put pipes in the ground.
Exactly.
Rock is the-
For your framing.
Yeah, there's rock out there, you know, boulders and cobblestone grain, that's the number one kinda concern, not really concern, but the factor on that site, and the racking system that they're choosing to use is well-suited for that type of subsol condition, so. They've already assumed that and are going in with that mindset, so.
Okay, all right. And I think a question came up in one of our meetings about any kind of reflection or anything coming back towards folks at all? Is any kind of reflection thing been done?
No, so like the panels themselves are designed to, you know, absorb the sun, and that reflection is lost, they have an anti-glare film on them that carries with it, you know. They, it's similar to, you know, looking out at the water, what they've done practically speaking, like that's kinda how it operates, so. And they face south too, so if you look at the way the, um, the site is, you know, fifteen runs north and south, they're kinda facing the other direction, so it's not really, you know, at anybody.
And then the last question I had was kinda, something went back, when I was a kid, you know, we looked for places like that to jump into and run around on, have you had issues with teenagers or anything in some of your facilities jumping over the fence and?
I, I don't know, that might be a Rob question.
Rob? Dick Peterson asking that question.
Uh, Luis, do you have some feedback on trespassers?
Uh, no, I mean, the, the systems are always inside of fans, and we have cases, but in cities, in cities, uh, here in Massachusetts, maybe in a couple of cities, like vandalism, but really small systems, really apart. Kids throwing rocks or things like that, but other than that, no. We put signs on in the, uh, that not trespass and the whole thing, so hopefully nobody goes in, uh, there is nothing there to really look at or, or touch or anything.
There's no way for them to get electrocuted?
Of course, if you go with a, with a knife and cut a wire, I mean, you can, you can have, you can be electrocuted, but, I mean, that's, that's, that's if you go on purpose and damage something, right? But if you touch without, nothing happens, it's really well-protected, it's, uh, it follows all the NEC regulations about insulation of the cables, and everything is encountered after leaves the array, so, underground. So, yep, shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's it?
I'm not set for now.
Anybody else?
Nope, all set.
Okay. One last time, we'll invite the public to make any comment. All right? So now we'll start the application review. Uh, we just talked about a little bit, environmental standards, uh, the first, soils are suitable for the land use. Anybody have any issue with that?
No.
Number two, stormwater runoff from the land use is minimized to the greatest practical extent and adequately managed to reduce the risk of irrelevant detrimental effects. Documentation. Anybody have any issues with the stormwater? Soil may be exposed during any soil disturbance, activity of the land use is adequately protected from unreasonable erosion and sedimentation. So these are, these are just like augered into the ground, correct, are they screwed, yeah?
Yeah.
So there's no digging, there's no trenching or anything really?
There will be for, you know, underground cable.
But nothing, not huge, you know?
No, no.
All right. Anybody have any issue with number three? Four, the, the surface and subsurface waters are adequately protected from the detrimental effects of any water pollutant from the land use. Any, so- Any, so, um, the buildings, the transformers in there?
Yeah, there's a patent on a transformers.
Okay.
So the transformers contain, you know, mineral oils, similar, um, similar as you see at like a C B S, those similar, say twenty-five-hundred K B A patent transformer.
Okay. The ambient air environment is adequately protected from the detrimental effects of any air pollutant from the land use. That's probably not, non-applicable.
I would think it would be quite non-applicable.
Significant wildlife habitat or other important habitat is identified in the Bucksport Comprehensive Plan as adopted are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effect of the land use. And I don't believe that's identified as a wildlife habitat. Vegetation within applicable shoreland district is protected from excessive cutting or removal. That's N A, right? It's not even shoreline, right? Site visit. To verify compliance with any environment objective, not needed. Any special conditions to ensure compliance with any environmental objective? N A. Move on to the special area standards. Special areas objectives that must be met. One, areas of prehistorical and historical importance are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effect of the land use. Nothing's identified over there, is there?
They've got all kinds of documentation in here from, from historic preservation of Indian tribes and...
Yep. All good. Uh, two, vistas of scenic value are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effect of the land use. There is no, most people are looking at power lines or something, but... Areas of public access to water bodies, wetlands, and areas developed with commercial fisheries and maritime activities are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effect of the land use. That's N A as well. Four, areas of flood hazard adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effect of the land use. There is a wetlands in there, but it's, it's not a flood plain or anything, is it? Areas with unique natural character identified in the Bucksport Comprehensive Plan as adopted are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effect of the land use. N A. Site visit required, N A. Special conditions, N A. Local area standards. The scale and site features of the land use are consistent with the, with the development patents in the local area or neighborhood.
There's nothing like it around, so...
Right. Yeah, anyone have any issue, especially with the screening? I, I don't see it's an issue.
I don't have any issue with where there's, where there's no abutters here or there's no testing, and that's what really gets me.
And the one issue that was brought up, they've, they've resolved it to this...
Yeah.
Landowner's approval, I would think.
Sounds like they want to move a fence line, so.
Yep. The land use is appropriately separated and shielded from abutting land uses in public or private ways to adequately mitigate any of all of it detrimental effect. I think that's the shielding, the, the plant, plantings and all that, right?
The fence and the buffering would be quite sufficient from what you described.
Any relevant detrimental effects of electromagnetic fields, electromagnetic fields from the land use adequately mitigated?
It would be beyond my knowledge.
So what, with the solar, with the electrical being generated, you, there will be some electromagnetic development, correct?
The panels, the panels themselves don't produce any electromagnetic waves, only the transformers, which have the same transformers that everybody has in the, in buildings and the schools, so, uh, those transformers are not different to all the transformers.
Okay.
And you could also point out that it'll have to be designed to National Electric Code and that'll be part of the building code, I mean, building permit application, so.
So do we list anything there or, because it's not really non-applicable? It's there, it's just, it's, it has to meet the...
Yeah, I mean, it's not something that we're concerned about, right? Based on...
So do we mark that non-applicable?
I would think it's applicable, we just need to acknowledge that it'll be up to the, is it the National Electric Code?
Yep.
That's it? Just acknowledge that it would be up to the standards that are set for it.
Okay. Any relevant detrimental effects of artificial lighting from the land use are adequately mitigated? Will there be any post, post-lighting, so no lighting, no, no scheduled work or emergency work at night or anything?
Well, that might happen in the storm or something, if there's an issue here, just similar to any development, but there's no, there's no lights proposed or nothing.
No streetlights or yardlights or anything?
Even, no lighting on the driveway or anything?
No.
Okay. Any relevant detrimental effects of noise from the land use are adequately mitigated? Is there, there be slight hum right from the, from the...
From the transformers.
From the transformers. But they're in a building, correct?
Yeah, they're on a pad located throughout the area.
How many?
Three.
So it, it just on, the transformer just stands alone on the pad or is, is there's a building on the pad?
No building.
No building at all?
There could be like a, a panel box with like a skater system, depending on the final design, but no, it's not like any closed building.
So, how loud would these... How far away would you be able to hear this hum?
Uh, maybe you have to be really close. You have to be maybe, uh, five, six feet close to the transformer.
Would this parallel, would this transformer parallel the transformer that's behind the middle school, that's where they park the generator? Would this be the same type of thing?
Yeah, exactly, same, same type of transformers, yep. That you, you see in the schools or buildings, the, the green boxes.
Yeah, it's in a green metal box about the size of this cubicle that we're sitting at now? Yeah, I, I hear, I hear that when I'm alone at night checking the, the middle school and that is not, that, like, if you try to hear it, you can hear it, but it is not something that obnoxiously radiates over the valley at all. Yep.
Yeah, and the, the other thing is that those transformers would not operate, uh, at night, right? Only during the day when the sun is out.
Oh, makes sense, yeah.
Makes sense, sure.
Yeah.
That does make sense.
That's kind of makes sense.
Well, like some people work rotating shifts and they sleep during the day.
Yeah, the sun's out now, I don't like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not going to disturb asleep on anybody, yeah.
Six, any relevant detrimental effects of nuisance odors from the land use are adequately mitigated? That would be N A. The solar gain utilized by active or passive solar energy collection systems that may be impacted by the land use is adequately protected. So the, the, I asked this early on, I think that there's no, uh, the neighbors won't feel anything, you know, because of all of this, this clustered, uh, solar panels, they won't feel any heat gain or anything?
No, practically speaking, no.
No, there's, there's nothing to feel or, or, I mean, there's no sound, no smell, uh, there is no moving parts, uh, yep, you, you should not notice it's there if you don't, if you don't look at it, yep, it's pretty quiet.
So these, they're, these solar panels all being on a bright sunny day, um, you won't feel any heat being radiated from these?
Yeah, they, I mean, they get hot as a, as a window, right? So you, if you touch it, yeah, you, you feel it hot, maybe fifty, sixty, uh, degrees, fifty C, uh, but as once you remove the hand, I mean, you don't feel anything, the air just, I mean, it's just, uh, like being close to a, to a hot window, you don't really feel any, uh, heat radiance from, from the glass.
Okay, so there'll, there'll be a lot of these hot windows all gathered in one spot? These are, these, the neighbors, the abutters, won't feel any added...
Nothing. No, because they, I mean, the panels are very efficient, so they absorb the, the heat and, and that's what they produce in, in electricity, so they are not really reflecting anything out, yep.
Is it the purpose of the panels to absorb?
Correct, yeah, exactly.
Not to emit, so...
Plus with the fencing.
If they're, if they're working right and they're working the way it's supposed to, all, all that we do is absorb, which is, which is their job, correct? To absorb.
Correct, yeah.
And anything they meant, it's a loss, it's a loss for you because you're losing power.
Right.
Well, there's nothing out there that is perfectly efficient, you know, and there's nothing that's a hundred percent efficient, so. And there is solar gain to a, to a solar collection system and these people are going to be living right next to it. It just, um, I don't buy that it's, it's, there'll, there'll be nothing for them, I mean, it's, um...
Yeah, no, I mean, of course, if you are close to the panels, uh, or, and you, you almost touch them, uh, you, you can feel the, the heat on the panel, but you have to really dare. If you are at a hundred feet or you are a three hundred, I mean, you don't feel anything.
We have those solar panels at the town garage that are on the roof and the solar panels that are at the wastewater treatment and just working for the town, I haven't heard anything from any of the guys ever complaining about extra heat generated or anything, from anything to do with any of it. Have you?
Well, those are relatively small compared to what's going here and it's just, I'm just worried about the people that live there.
Yeah, but what Louis is saying is that you have, if you have to stand there and touch one of the panels, well, people aren't going to be able to, you know, get across the security gate, security fence to get that close to the panel. So I would think if there's any heat generated by the panels, people are going to be several hundred feet away and have vegetation in between, so I can't imagine they'd be able to feel anything.
Okay. Number, uh, wrong one. Number eight, any relevant detrimental effects of smoke or dust from the land use adequately mitigated? So there'll be a road, um, is, there'll be a gravel road in there?
Yep, gravel road.
And there's no road on the inside of the fence? It's just, it'll be grass but wide enough for a truck to make it through around, right?
Correct, yeah.
So there won't be any, uh, like these, these logging areas, you know, although the, you know, the dust is everywhere after a long, dry stretch in the summertime. These people won't be dealing with dust all over their houses, correct?
No, because there's really no traffic either. So, you know, during construction, they'll be required to, you know, maintain dust control a lot of the road and then, you know, you're talking, you know, a couple trips as needed for maintenance, so there's really no ins and outs.
Okay. Any relevant detrimental effects of subterranean vibration from the land use? That would be N A, I would think. Site visit? Do we require a site visit? Special conditions? Public safety standards? The quantity and quality of public and private drinking water supplies are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use? There's no, uh, do we know if there's any wells in there there or...
I mean, I'm sure the houses that are abutting have wells, but...
But there's no...
There's nothing in here that should contaminate wells, I would think.
Yeah, plus, plus any stormwater runoff gets managed through the stormwater system.
So what...
If one of these panels breaks, is there anything that's going to leak into the ground or anything that would be...
No, they're ninety-five percent glass and then it's just, um, then it's, I think it's a little like silicone powder on the inside, very small amount, and then just wiring, so, you know, no worse than a broken TV really, but then they would get notified that there's an issue with the system and then a maintenance person would come pick it up.
So the oil that's in the transformers, um, it's not like the, the oil of fifteen, twenty years ago?
No, 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 of all non-P C B oil, uh, like same that you have in your service can that goes to your house. There's no filling.
Mineral oil.
Yeah, mineral oil, they come full, there's no ins and outs, it doesn't get refilled, it's just there for insulating within the transformer.
So how much oil would be in a typical transformer?
It varies, but each one has about, I don't know, similar in size, between three and five hundred gallons.
So should one of those fail and all of that oil leak out, how far away, you know, would a neighbor's well be contaminated because of mineral oil?
No, it'd be very unlikely. So then the other thing to think about is if they trigger S P C C, they'll have an S P C C plan for spills, but again, a release like that of the transformer would notify the facility and they would go clean it up, so. Transformer oil isn't like gas where it migrates a lot, it, it's kind of, you know, pretty viscous.
Yeah. That's it?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on it.
Go ahead.
Have you had one break at all?
The transformer or...
Any, any, any leaks at all?
You know, they've happened in the past with, with transformers, but it's very rare because it's not, you know, most leaks, and I do a lot of S P C C work, um, most leaks are human error or like an accident.
But is the pad set up so that it can maybe hold some and then is there an alarm that would go off? I'm just asking.
There is an alarm that would go off, so it would be noted as an increase in temperature, they would get notified and then...
I think Brian's question's a good question, if these people are...
I, I think I am wrong.
The safety and sufficiency of energy supply services...
Yeah, sorry, internet went out, so I got you on speaker now.
Yeah, I can, I can hear you guys, but it's just we got no connection with, with Tom.
We can keep going.
Okay. The safety and sufficiency of energy supply services are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use? Non-applicable?
Everything, non-applicable.
The public safety services are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use? Public wastewater facilities are adequate, adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use? Doesn't... Yep. The proper maintenance of solid waste is adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use. The only waste would be from a repair project or something and that would probably all be taken with them. The safety and sufficiency of streets and sidewalks are adequately protected from any relevant detrimental effects of the land use. The only issue would be where the driveway comes out onto the road and the D O T permit would cover that, I think.
Yeah, I mean, there's an existing driveway there now and once the construction is done, there's going to be almost no, no vehicles in and out unless there's mowing or something goes wrong, so.
Do we believe we need a site visit? I don't. Uh, special conditions, no. Specific use standards? Do we have... There's, there's nothing listed there. Uh, any issues with dimensions? So it's a forty-one acre lot, right, and they're only using about twenty acres?
Correct, because they have to avoid the wetlands.
Oh, so they did, okay, they, originally they were going through some of that, huh?
Yeah, there are some wetland impacts.
We're permitting those with D E P and Corps of Engineers.
So, this might be a, going backwards a little, but the contract zone, the contract agreement is for the entire forty-one acre lot, correct? Or just the twenty acres they plan on using for...
It said up to a twenty-acre solar area.
I have forty-one point five plus or minus acre undeveloped parcel.
Okay.
I don't know that there's a way to, with zoning, do half of a map and lot, I mean, it's, you know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Um, a lot is either zoned for something or it's not. The only way you could divide it would be to have the lot divided into two lots.
So if they want to do something with the 20-some-odd acres, they would have to come back and talk to us?
They could, but they'd have to get DEP approval and stuff, and that's pretty unlikely with the wetlands and stuff.
That probably wouldn't happen.
Okay, so we're going to go back now to do the findings? So environment standards?
There is clear convincing evidence in the record to support the conclusion that applicable environmental objectives have been met.
I will second that motion.
Okay. Actually, did we have them, we had them all as NA, correct?
No, all of them.
Of environmental standards? Okay. Let me make sure I'm on the right page here.
That's the plan, Brian, with the...
What's that?
That right there is the area of wetlands that they go through, but the rest of it they avoid.
Okay.
I'll show you that.
Okay, so you have, you made a motion, and Steve seconded, correct? Any discussion? All in favor? You going to abstain?
Yeah.
Special area standards?
That's funny, man.
Did we take up anything in that?
I believe that we have them all as non-applicable, so there's no vote required, correct?
That's what I thought.
Yes. Local area standards? I think...
There was a couple, yeah.
There's a couple, yeah, but I think, you know, the electromagnetic fields, they'll have to build to the code.
Yes.
I made some notes on some others, but... So...
I would motion that there is clear convincing evidence in the record to support the conclusion that the local area objectives have been met.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Abstain? Public safety standards?
Did we have any?
I was just concerned with the transformer oil, but it is viscous, it's not going to flow like gasoline would, and if, where, I don't know how close to the property line anybody's well is, but, you know, my well's 300 and something feet, so...
Is it, there's 400 gallons, is that correct, about 300 to 400 gallons?
It varies by the final size, and that's the thing with transformers, they sit along lead time, you don't really know what you're going to get, but that's ballpark, correct?
I just wonder if they, has anybody ever been near one that's had a leak, or however they, they decide to break down? Does it leak, leak out?
It could, so there's fail safes, and they're all designed differently, but really the most common leak would just be like the gasket dripping, and then if there was a, you know, catastrophic issue, you know, they have a release to just drop the oil to the ground, which is kind of a safety measure, so...
But they never explode, or...
Well, you know, you can't say never, because that's, you know, it's electric equipment, but, you know, it's all, we've come a long ways in technology, so... Just think, you know, how many transformers there are that CMP owns and substations all over, and we don't hear about those blowing up, and they're much larger pieces of equipment.
Have you ever responded to a fire or anything for one of those, Jay? You've been doing them a lot, I guess, yeah, I've never even...
Never heard of one, actually.
I don't think I've even talked about it.
Yes.
The most common transformer, you know, is going to be like, you know, somebody, like an ice storm?
Yeah.
Transformers go on top of your pole, or, you know, someone hits the pole, and it's, you know, it's the same deal, CMP goes and remediates it.
Or screw it.
Huh?
Or screw it.
Yeah, oh yeah, I've seen plenty of those, but I mean, these big ones, like...
So we can, we can say all non-applicable? We good with that? All right. Specific use standards? You didn't come up with any? So... Dimensions? An issue there? And final decision?
I make a motion to be still approved.
Second the motion.
So that would be based on the conclusions of the planning board as documented above, the proposed land use will not have any impact that is contrary to the purposes of the Appendix K land use, and therefore the application is approved.
That is my motion, Mr. James.
And that's what you seconded?
Absolutely.
Any discussion? And all in favor? Abstain. That's it. Colonel Baham? And we have administrative business? Any administrative business?
Just that, since I have internet now, that training is on July 20th. And I think the email said it was from 4:00 PM to 7:30 PM, so it's in the late afternoon, early evening.
Are they providing meals for them? Send you a gift certificate out of Wendy's or something. Any other discussion?
I'll send out an email for that, and I just need a solid answer, because it does cost us money and...
Even the Zoom meeting?
Yeah, they're still charged. I think it's $50.
At least they go someplace to give you a Subway or a couple pieces of pizza.
$45 because we're members. It would be 90 if you weren't.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Motion to adjourn? Second.
All in favor? Oh, now we vote.
Thank you, gentlemen.
No, thank you for working with us, I know it's not...